Welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting with a joint meeting with the Senate from ASWSU tonight. And first of all, we'll have Dee take role of the Pullman Council.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
And Hannah Martin is Senate chairman, so you get to take role now.
Senator Vargas. Senator Nakasone.
Present.
Senator Avila.
Present.
Senator Sotelo.
Present.
Senator De Bru.
Present.
Senator Simmons. Senator Malley Harrison. Senator Bailey McCoy.
Present.
Senator Dolphy.
Present.
Senator Sholider.
Present.
Senator Torres. Senator Granados.
Present.
Senator McDonald.
Present.
Senator Christopher.
Present.
Senator Martin.
Present.
Senator Chavez.
Present.
Senator Brayton.
Present.
Senator Alcantara.
Present.
Senator Aquino.
Present.
Senator Valles Fucal.
Present.
Delegate Martinez.
Present.
And Delegate Rogers.[68.73][68.73]27:00
Well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a lot of your picture.
It is, it is.
So we do announcements first, then we'll have our joint meeting. So under announcements tonight, coming up this weekend is a rather busy weekend in Pullman. Starting at 7 o'clock on Saturday morning, we have the Goanis Pancake Breakfast and Music Fest at Lincoln Middle School. Then we have Palouse Cares Food Drive, a meet at Zepo's at 9:00 a.m. 11 o'clock, Palouse Cares Fundraiser at Zepo's for food, drink, and silent auction. 4 o'clock, at the Pine Street Plaza Holiday Fest and Tree Lighting. At 4 o'clock, the YMCA Jingle Bell Fun Run begins. At 4:20, Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony. 5 o'clock, Santa Visits. 5:15, Sigma Phi Epsilon Choir. At 5:50, the Holiday Prize Package Drawing. 6 o'clock, Paradise Creek Brewery Holiday Fest After Party. After you've been partying all day, apparently you need to go to Paradise Creek. I guess that's the way it works. And then, if you really want to veg out, at 7:30, the Washington-Itoh Symphony Plays at PHS. That's a full day. And then also, to facilitate city cleanup services, College Hill Street Parking Prohibition will begin effect again. We did it during Thanksgiving. Also happened WSU Winter Break between December 16th and January 10th, from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. Gary Jenkins will be talking a little bit about that tonight. Complete details are on the city website. And also, we also make notation here that Pullman Moscow Regional Airport is doing quite well. They've also added a fifth flight. That also means parking's a little challenged right now, so if you have a way to have somebody take you to the airport, that's a lot better if you can possibly do that. So with that, those are the announcements. And so Hannah, thank you very much, and thank you Senators for being here tonight. We do this twice a year for those who are new. In spring, we're in your place. Wherever you decide we're going to meet, we'll be there, okay? After we reach a mutual group today. And so, the last time we were at the Ellison Floyd Cultural Center, worked out very well. And so this time, we meet here. And we've been doing this since 1997. I went back and looked at our records, and so the city councils met twice a year with ASWSU. And we've had actually some ASWSU Presidents who've gone on to the national meetings, and they said, "This is sort of unusual. Don't see that a lot with city councils meeting with ASWSU," or with student body leaders. But we find it's very, very important. So we came up with some topics our council did, and we're going to go through those tonight, and you might have some people that might have some input too as well. So one of the first ones on our list was homelessness and poverty, including mental health. And Jeff Gaiet is here from the Community Action Center. We're going to start with him, and Nathan's going to have some comments from Poverty Awareness Committee. But we want to let everyone know some of the different varieties of services that are available in this community. And Jeff, from the Community Action Center, will start it off.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor Johnson, and councilmembers, and ASWSU folks. I gave you a handout that probably has way too much information than what I can cover tonight, but it really does set a framework of the need that's faced here in Whitman County for homelessness, and some of the issues with poverty and food insecurity are all in there. What I wanted to do is really just briefly touch on the need, but then also highlight some of the services that are provided as we go along the way. And I want to also note that when it comes to homelessness, WSU campus is not immune. I just was speaking with a faculty member yesterday, and they said that there's one of the buildings up there, that there's a homeless person that just hangs out in that building, and that's just part of the deal. And we're finding here in Pullman, pardon me, here in Pullman, that we're seeing an increase in some of the chronic homelessness, where in the past, we've not really seen that. That chronic homelessness is very small, miniscule, compared to some of the metropolitan areas. So we might have a dozen or so folks who are living out undercover, unsheltered, here in Pullman. If you look at this first sheet of paper that I handed out to you, it really is kind of interesting to note. There's a lot of information that's packed into this. We do have about 626 folks that we help with rental assistance to prevent homelessness each year. Over 831 folks come to us for services at Community Action Center. We provide homeless housing services, as well as utility assistance, Section 8 housing vouchers for affordable housing, weatherization for homeowners who are low-income, as well as food security side. We provide a food bank for folks who are hungry in our community. And so, one of the things that we like to do is we like to partner with WSU CCE, the Center for Civic Engagement, for our food pantry. We get a lot of volunteers that come down and help in our food pantry, and we also have folks who are students at WSU who come down and receive food from our pantry as well. And so, we're really glad to be able to provide that service and to have that help in the community. I think one of the other things we want to note is that we provide what we call transitional housing, which is now kind of coming out of favor in terms of federal guidelines for policies and how you serve homeless folks. Transitional housing basically gives people a place to live for up to two years, where they have some case management as they go through getting moved into permanent housing. So they might need help with finding a job, they might need help with getting childcare set up for their family. Increasing income for the household is really critical. So we'll help with those, setting goals for each family, and then moving them into permanent housing. If you move into the second page of the sheets that I gave you, this Whitman County snapshot talks about the gap between the affordable housing that's available and the housing need that we have out in the county. And as you can see, folks are at the lower end of the income scale. There's a huge gap between available housing for them that's affordable and what's available out in the county. So for instance, folks who are, if you look over on the right-hand side, in the middle of the page, folks are in that 0% to 50% of median income in the county. For every hundred folks, for every hundred units of household, there's only 36 that are available for those folks. So there's a gap there of 64 units that are needed. And I think I came and spoke to the council not too long ago about House Bill 1406, which is a way to provide some affordable housing out of our sales tax, keep it here local in Whitman County. And we're currently building a 56-unit Affordable Housing Project. Community Action Center is right here up behind the hospital. Those 56 units of housing meet only less than 5% of the need for the folks who are cost-burdened, who are below 50% income. So we would need 1,100 more units of that housing in order to house the folks who have that need. So it's pretty critical. And one of the things to note too is that although our poverty rate is going down here in Whitman County, it used to be at 32%, 33% back in 2013. Now it's dropped down to 27.5%. Of course, that's including WSU campus, so some of the folks that are independent on campus, earning less income, are going to kind of be showing up in those numbers. If you take that population out, we're still at like 15%, 16%, 17% poverty rate, which is much higher than the average here in Washington State. If you look also on the backside of this, you can see the cost burden, the cost-burdened households, the number of folks in different income brackets. You can see there's a high need, even folks who are in that above 100% of median income, there's still some cost-burdened folks who have very unaffordable housing, both in the rental side and in the homeownership side. So one of the things that I did want to share with you is that most of the people that we serve at Community Action Center are working folks, and so that's why I included the sheet about Alice. It's asset-limited, income-constrained, but employed. So basically, what we've come to known as the working poor. And these are the folks that maybe work on a job that is not quite enough to cover the costs for their housing, their food, medication, et cetera. And we find that most of the people that we work with, they're working jobs, but they're really stretched each month. And so if there's a transportation issue, or there's a medical need that's a huge cost in a month, that can kind of set them over the edge and actually push a lot of people on the brink of homelessness. A lot of what we talked about in Whitman County for how we address homelessness for us is we'll do prevention. So if folks are in a high-cost rental property, and they're not really able to make all of their rent, we are able to assist them sometimes to meet that need. If they've had a month where it's tough, and they weren't able to get that rent paid, and they're in arrears, we have funds and services that are available to help cover those costs. Just really briefly too, the folks who come and come to our food bank, oftentimes, you know, they'll come once a month, and that's enough to get them through the month. But it certainly isn't the same as providing enough groceries for a family of four to do that in a month for one visit, is just not going to happen. So we call it supplemental, and it really is helpful for families. And of course, if a family comes, or a student comes, and they're hungry, and they've already been there that month, we're certainly not going to turn them away. We'll allow them to go through and gain, you know, get the food that they need to eat. We don't want anybody to go hungry. Just quickly, want to also share, on the very last page, we recently conducted a community needs assessment. This really reflects the partnerships that we have in the county. All the folks at the top of the page helped to get this survey out there. The only highlights I really want to make on this, there's some highlighted results. We still have about 18% who are food insecure. So about 18% respond each year that they are concerned about having enough food for the household at least once in a year. And 10% say that they are concerned about that through several times a year. So food insecurity, although it's, we try to address it with our pantry here at Community Action Center, and there's also, Pullman Child Welfare has a pantry as well. I do know that WSU is working on some pantries and getting those vitalized up on campus, and the Basic Needs Task Force has recently been meeting to try to talk about how to meet those student needs who are just on the edge of going hungry, or not being able to afford housing, and other needs that they may have. And I think Mayor Johnson talked about the Palouse Cares Event this weekend. That's a big food drive that helps every year to feed families both in Leita and Whitman County. And if you have an opportunity to participate, I would really recommend that you do that. Really provides a lot of food and funding for the food pantries in the area. You know, to kind of highlight the needs in the county in terms of what people are saying they need most, medical care, affordable dental care, affordable medical care, and access to library system are still kind of the top three needs. Access to mental health services is also very high on the needs list. It's really important for us to know what the needs are, and as a result of our 2015 needs assessment, we were actually able to recruit the local, I can't remember the name of it right now, the dental clinic up here on Bishop Boulevard, who provides, basically, their target market is the Medicaid population, so folks who are lower-income and can't afford dental insurance are to be able to get that service. And so that's been open for now about a year, I think, here in Pullman, so that's been a great addition. We've also formed a Whitman County Food Coalition as a result of the assessment. So we've got a lot of need in the county, but we also have a lot of resources. We work with partners all the time who are gathering food and donating it to us, who are working with us to find policy solutions to some of the housing issues that we face. And of course, we are really looking forward to and encouraged by the work that the Basic Needs Task Force is doing up on campus. I think that'll really help with some of those students who are kind of living on the edge there as well. That, I don't really have much else.
We have a WSU student serving on our board.
That's right. Yeah, so we have a WSU student.
We also take many volunteers.
Right, we do. Yeah, and it's been a great partnership with WSU, you know, all the services that we provide, as well as being able to share. We've had folks who actually come and do an internship in our staff for the experience, and they end up becoming employees of our agency and serving the community that way, which has been a great boon to us, for sure. Any questions?
Questions? Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate all that you do.
Councilmember Nathan Weller is Chair of the Poverty Awareness Committee, so Nathan.
Yes, thank you. So for those of you that don't know, and I'm sure many don't, the Poverty Awareness Task Force is made up of both private and public partnership. This includes the Community Action Center, our emergency services, police and fire, of course. It includes Center for Civic Engagement, Alternatives to Violence on the Palouse, community members, Veterans Housing Authority out of Spokane, and the Whitman County Health Department, and several others. The challenge we face here in Pullman of homelessness is getting worse, frankly, and it does include students. I remember giving a presentation several years ago about couch surfing. Couch surfing often does not get counted in the point-in-time counts, and so it doesn't provide a very good view of the overall issue when it comes to student homelessness. I know because several of my friends went through this themselves. It hits particularly close to home. Poverty, especially with whether you're a student or elderly, is one step, one medical bill away from homelessness. There are some issues that I think do need to be addressed. One, if you don't know about it, and Jeff, you can always discuss it with them at another time if you want, the point-in-time count that occurs here in Whitman County occurs in January, and that point-in-time count looks at how many homeless are out here. The challenge with a January point-in-time count is that many people are either sheltered for the winter, and people can't find the homeless at that time. However, you can often find tents and so on and so forth, and Jeff Tejent with the Community Action Center goes out and does a great job of trying to find those people and do outreach. I've been receiving a lot of questions recently regarding the Warming Center that I helped organize with the city. The Interfaith Group, if people don't know about that, it's a group of organization, of faith organizations, the Jewish community, the Islamic Center, Catholic, Christian, it goes across all faiths. The city and myself, Community Action Center, Family Promise of the Palouse, we all came together to do this Warming Center last year, to see how things would go. It was a challenge, especially with the late winter that we had, but I'd like to share real quick, before we move on, a story that hopefully will highlight how important this is. And it's important because for all of you, you're here for two, for some odd years. So let me tell you. Christmas Eve last year, I came in to do a volunteer shift at about midnight. It was icy, very icy. And there were two people from the Islamic Center there, and I heard the door open. Now, in this Warming Center, we had information on all of the services, all the faith groups in our community. We had donations, food, cots from Sojourners Alliance. This was really a regional effort, because in the Quad City area, Lewiston, Clarkson, Moscow, Pullman, we don't have any Warming Center, and it's becoming a crisis. So I heard the door open, and this man, probably about late twenties, came in with flip-flops on. I thought he was a volunteer. He had a big rucksack on, but I thought he was a volunteer. So he came up and, you know, he said, "Is this the Warming Center? Are you guys open?" "Yes, of course." So we started talking to him. This man had served over in Iraq. He had gone to USC and found himself here at WSU, but couldn't get into any class because he owed too much money. He was trying to better himself and provide for his son and his wife who were in the area. And he had been walking from Colfax through the ice. Now, we put him up for the night. He was so tired, so tired. We gave him one of the cots, and he went over to the pamphlets and picked up the Veterans Housing Authority sheet. And right away, he said, "I'm going to call them right now." I said, "You know, it's Christmas Eve, buddy. I don't know if that's going to work right now." But he did. He said, "Okay, I'll try tomorrow." So as soon as he laid down, he was out. The man was snoring, just, he was just exhausted. But this is one example of what we face here, and it's getting worse. I've had three calls in the last two days regarding homelessness, regarding a Warming Shelter. In the last week, I've had four Facebook messages. And today, Dee, thank you for the email, there was another call regarding a Warming Center. This is going to take a real collaboration between the city of Pullman, the multiple agencies that we have in our area, we do have many, many services, but also it's going to take ASWSU and ultimately WSU, because this is not a Pullman city problem only. This is a Pullman community problem with WSU. And beyond that, it's also a Moscow regional problem. So I just wanted to, I'm sorry for being so dour and down on this, but I did want to at least emphasize the issue that we face right now. And everybody knows how cold it's getting. So apologies for bringing the mood down a bit, Mr. Mayor, but.
From there, let's move on to the regional transportation. And Wayne, why don't you talk about Pullman Transit? And I know John Shaheen is here from WSU Transportation, and there might be, I think you've been looking into some things going on with the regional transit. I know that University of Idaho stepped up this year, especially dealing with the airport, where they're offering transportation for University of Idaho. I think it starts December 16th to the airport, taking people there to the airport and picking people up afterwards. So I don't know what WSU is doing, but at least I heard that from University of Idaho.
Thank you. I will touch on that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ASWSU student representatives. The Moscow-Pullman Bus, even though it hasn't existed since 2011, it's always a dynamic topic of conversation. What people tend to remember about that service is a system that ran from 1992, operated by a private charter company, Wheatland Express, funded entirely by the two universities, and was intended for access to cross-listed classes by students of both universities. The service ended in the spring of 2011 due to low ridership. Those who were using the service at that time were mostly using the service for work commute purposes, not the students in cross-listed classes as it had been designed for. I started the Pullman Transit a few months after the service had ended, but it has continued to be remembered in almost mythical proportions. Those who speak fondly of its return speak of ridership is voluminous, funding never-ending. Both communities would be equally supportive and equally benefit from the service. Others recall a failed investment, dwindling list of cross-listed courses. What I want to introduce tonight as a topic of discussion is that history, plus our priorities for transit service in Pullman, as well as the necessary partnerships and the pros and cons of such a connection. If we jump ahead to 2019, today, our focus, our priority is fine-tuning the community routes and the express routes that we have on the road. We would very much like to get our community routes back to 30-minute loops, but we also are paying attention to the residential development we see primarily in the northwest and southwest parts of Pullman. We see the solution as another route. At the same time, we need to add to our existing express service on the WSU campus. We currently have six daytime routes that operate, and each morning, we add five more as they finish their public school routes. And more service, I'm sure, will be appreciated. To add either a community route or an express route means adding one and a half driving positions and a bus, and that takes both time and money. After meeting these local expansion needs, we had planned for service to the Moscow-Pullman Regional Airport as our next priority. That service also takes time and money, so we have already started the planning process. If we serve just the weekday service, if we serve three arrivals, three departures just during the weekdays, that would add 12 hours of daily service, again, a driver and a half of driving positions. The cost of that service, not including the bus, we currently budget at $242,000. After that priority is met, we felt looking seriously at involvement in a Moscow-Pullman connection would be in line. One consideration would be to combine the priorities, the airport and the Moscow-Pullman connection. Yes, it is only eight miles, we realize, but you have to ask some questions. Would people use a service to go from town to town, the detours to the airport? Is the airport road currently sufficient to support regular bus traffic? Do we have the infrastructure in the city? Tow trucks is what I have in mind to support the occasional bus in trouble that's distant from the city shop. And last but not least, if we do expand service, the eight miles to Moscow, would we now be in the regional connectivity business and find that the communities of Colton, Albee, and Colfax, Palouse are now waiting in line for their turn of service? If the residents of Pullman want a bus that connects the two cities sooner at a higher priority, then I need to get that direction from City Council. We need to start talking about the partnerships, funding, and more. Obviously, there would need to be an expectation that the lead agencies from both cities would be involved and in agreement on the need and on how that need is met. That means that WSU, University of Idaho, Moscow Smart Transit, Pullman Transit, and the city councils of both communities would be involved. For you, both the council and ASWSU student representatives, this means that the service is something that your constituents would want, maybe even willing to support financially, and would both use and benefit from. And I emphasize that last point, as the opposite can also be true. A connection between university towns opens up resources, both academically and retail, and gives consumers options. Would all businesses benefit? Probably not. So for whoever provides the service, the primary source of funding would be the federal intercity bus program. That's a 5311F grant, formerly. That's the funding that's out there right now to provide, to assist with regional connectivity between public and private transit systems. It's currently assisting the Grape Line in the Walla Walla area, the Apple Line in the Wenatchee area, but this only provides 50% of the operational costs. The rest would have to be met locally. And what that means is it's likely going to be met through fares, where we'd have to look seriously at an increase in our utility tax. where we'd have to look seriously at an increase in our utility tax. Some of the questions on the, the level of interest in service may very well be answered soon. As Mayor Johnson mentioned, a trial shuttle service has been developed by the University of Idaho, and actually started yesterday. There's, there's two parts to that. They are connecting the two communities for cross-listed classes, started yesterday, running for two weeks. The last week will be just Moscow to the airport, going up to December 20th. So their focus was on a four-time daily service, connecting the two campuses. There are over 50 students at the University of Idaho attending WSU classes, nearly 90 students at WSU going to Idaho. I've inquired, and ridership was quite low yesterday, the first day, so they are intending to open that service to anyone with a valid Idaho or WSU ID. Again, the U of I is simply gathering data at this point. There are no plans, no firm plans, to extend the shuttle after the trial. And there's a lot of good data, maps, timetables, on the University of Idaho Parking and Transportation website and Facebook site. So if there is indeed an interest in us pursuing a permanent connection between Moscow and Pullman, we would need a realistic timeframe to hire employees, to add vehicles, to work with the local partners individually, and to apply for the grant funding. We would also need a clear direction from council with regards to how this project would impact our existing service priorities. If we have a discussion, I know I'll offer the answers to the questions I would expect, and that's regarding what is that realistic timeframe and what is the cost? To do it right, to get vehicles, to get the federal funding, August of 2021 would be the soonest realistic timeframe I could see. And the cost of running the service, if we did combine it with the airport service, and that would be six daily trips, and if we extended that to seven days a week, not just five, the cost, as I estimate, would be $340,000 per year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on, on that?
More of comments regarding this now. Can you provide a little bit more information regarding the pool of funding? You know, when, so this is gonna be a little confusing, because I know for, for myself, this has been a project taken on over, over the many years. And in, during the recession, I, both universities pulled funding from the, from the bus, however, continued doing cross classes, expecting students to get themselves over to classes on each side of the border, which seems a little unfair. Now, that's not on, on us as a city.
Sure.
Do you have any numbers of how many students at that time were being served by the bus? You had said it was a very low number, but are there any numbers?
I don't. I'll put John Shaheen on the spot. He's here from WSU Transportation Department Services. If John can enlighten us, I'm sure he'd be glad to.
Good evening. John Shaheen, Director of Transportation, WSU. So the number of students that were ultimately served by that commuter service was less than 10. So the majority, vast majority of those riders were Moscow residents coming to work at WSU. So it kind of morphed from what was to be an academic purpose to one of, that served the two community, well, sort of served the two communities. I mean, it started going campus to campus, then expectations and demands created some pressure to get beyond the campuses, stop at the mall, stops in Moscow, stops in Pullman. And it, it kind of grew and became just basically a commuter service, funded by the two universities. So there was no external funding, other than the universities funding it.
And wasn't the funding, I mean, I, I know when the University of Idaho was having financial problems, as they're having today, and WSU, when you're looking at your tight budgets, how much were we subsidizing that? Do you recall what the?
It wasn't, it was fully funded from, there was no subsidy.
It was all funded?
It was fully funded until the end, and then there was, there was an effort to charge a fare. And I think the, the riders were polled, I think it was determined it was six, it would be $6 a trip, one trip, one way. And it wasn't financially viable without the subsidies between University of Idaho and WSU. The, the system, the service was funded on the U of I side by student fees. And obviously, students weren't being served, so the students decided to pull the funding. You know, I mean, it makes sense. And so it wasn't possible for WSU to continue to fund, fully fund it, so that's, that's kind of how it evolved, the end evolved.
Do you remember what the number was, in terms of how much you funded it?
It was about, it was between $270,000 and $300,000.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I wish Peg Motley was here. She could probably give you the full experience as she had. She operated the Wheatland Express.
And that was, that was just WSU, or was that both the University of Idaho and WSU for the quarter of a million?
As far as the, that total?
Yeah.
It was about $270,000 to $300,000. It ranged in that, it was in that range, between the two.
I see. Okay.
The, the thing to remember, I love the mythic proportion comment, that's exactly what's happening. The, the important thing is that if, if you, if you go out on this venture, it's important to define the scope and define the expectations. Because what can, you know, I want to correct a little bit of what Wayne said. The service now is going between the campuses, U of I and WSU only. It's not serving the communities at all, just the campuses. But that's a, that's a common misunderstanding. When people talk about the bus between Moscow and Pullman, you ask 20 different people, they'll give you 20 different answers about what that means and who it's going to serve and where it's going to go. And so it's really important, because it's not just going eight miles, it's going between the communities or between the campuses and then serve, if it's going to serve the community, it's got to go out into the neighborhoods and residential. And you know the scope of Pullman Transit operations just in Pullman. So trying to tie that, and, and they don't, they don't have near the robust transit system in Moscow that we have here. So trying to connect Moscow residents with a service like that, it would be far more difficult to do on their side of the border than it is here where we have an existing transit service, so. But that's helpful.
Okay.
Glad you had followed me.
Yeah, follow.
So I appreciate what you say about the, the scope. When I started looking at this, when it first went away, several of the people that were utilizing the bus actually were going to Moscow for medical care and either couldn't drive or didn't have the financial capability. And that was after, of course, the service kind of expanded. I, and I continue to hear that these days, working, you know, with the different groups that I do. And, you know, I also appreciate the, the picture that the idea of the mythos of the bus kind of paints in everybody's mind. Although I do feel with the increase in population of both Pullman and Moscow, and the fact that we do have people going in between both cities, I, I think that should, should be noted. And I'm, I'm sure as the census comes out in 2020, we'll see additional data regarding that. I would also, just real quick, like to recognize Josh Hyler, if you could stand up real quick. Josh Hyler is somebody who had brought this back to my attention, and I just wanted to thank you, Josh, for bringing this. I think any good project, any, any good idea is a step-by-step type of situation. And moving forward, looking at the scope of what, what could be done and, and what should be avoided is, is really important, and luckily, we have the history of that. And it's good to hear they have a pilot project, but it does sound like the student population utilizing the bus has risen since the last time it was utilized. Is that correct, Wayne? Because you said it's 50, and before John had said it was 10.
Those are students enrolled in cross-listed classes. As of yesterday morning.
Doesn't mean they're taking the bus, it's just.
Unfortunately, as of yesterday morning, ridership was zero.
Zero.
First two trips, we heard, was zero.
All right. Well, thank, yes, Eileen.
Boy, there's a lot of, there's a lot of sharp edges on this. One of, one of the things that we have not contemplated is I see a lot of Idaho plates leaving Schweitzer and going over to Moscow. So that's maybe a population group that could be served by this. Can we maybe scrape some numbers together as to how many SEL employees could possibly, has that been contemplated at all?
It's really, it's really not an issue of ridership. There would be plenty of ridership for a system. The problem is the funding and, and making it affordable. So you have, you have, you know, it's an issue of, as long as it's got to be privately funded, we don't believe that you can make it affordable to most people. So really, the, I think, I think Nathan alluded to the census, which would possibly create, help us create and be kind of the beginning of an MPO status for Moscow-Pullman, opens the door for more transit funding. And I think that really is the ultimate vehicle for doing it right.
Yeah, and I know we, there had been discussions several years ago about whether a metro designation for our region would open up those, those funds. And I, you know, appreciate you for, you know, mentioning that. I mean, yeah.
Well, thank you very much, and we want to say at this point, and Wayne usually do it, we want to thank John, because if it wasn't for the parking money and transportation money to help subsidize our Pullman Transit and ASWSU, because the student body came through for us too, twice. And that's the only way we can actually run that transit system today and offer the service we're offering. So we want to thank the students for that very much.
Thank you.
With that, we got about three more topics we're gonna do. And Hannah, you have a senator who wants to do our presentation tonight. So why don't we do the senator right now?
All right.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do a break here with a senator.
We have Senator Chavez presenting. She's an uncertified senator. And we also have Senator Christopher presenting, who is also an uncertified senator.
Do I need my phone or?
I think, did we?
Have you figured out how the system was going to work in there?
Nope, then, then Chair Chavez will do it off her phone.
Okay.
So that's senators who, so for example, I'm a College of Education senator, so I represent students who have been certified in a college. So students who are freshmen, sophomores, who have not been certified into any major or college, these fine folks represent. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Monica Chavez. My pronouns are she, her, hers.
I'm Jelani Christopher, a pronunciate in his.
And we're here to talk about student police relations in just Pullman and on-campus in general. And we kind of wanted to focus on just police forces, both Pullman and WCU, and then also just student safety all throughout Pullman.
This is yours?
So just some national statistics, just to, just give some background. Pretty much in 28 states, the share of arrested students who are black is at least 10 percentage points higher than their share of enrollment in schools. And then also, this is just like a graphic to just kind of show the fact that there is a disparity between people of color who are being arrested more than their white counterparts. And it is a problem here in Pullman, especially how later on, we're going to talk about the Daily Evergreen article that was released a couple, like a month ago. So here are just some national, national statistics on that.
All right. And so the Daily Evergreen article and Pullman statistics, basically Pullman's black population is, or percentage of Pullman's population that is black is 2.7%. Yet, black residents accounted for 12.5% of all arrests, which is a pretty big discrepancy between the actual numbers. Black people accounted for 22% of Pullman's traffic offenses and 30% of drug arrests, even though statistics show that people of color and white people use drugs at the same rates. So there's, for being such a low share of Pullman's population, we see that there's issues with these numbers.
And then we kind of just wanted to talk about current affairs and police training. We couldn't find anything about Pullman police itself. But we did find some, some information about national training. And nationally, it's very inconsistent between state to state, because of the fact that it's not like regulated at all. So basically, police officers are then kind of just led up to their own discretion on what training they go through and what requirements happen, how often it does happen, which then leads to inconsistencies about how each city does police their, their people within the city. Here's like a statistic about 34 states, the training decisions are like left to local agencies. And then after, just kind of, also here in Pullman as well, that happens.
And so we have a few Senate resolutions that tackle this issue in a way. So these two were passed during the last Senate. So Resolution 48-18 approaches the issue of sexual assault committed by officers. This is something that we really felt needs to be tackled because of the particular case that happened last year. And so that's one thing that we want to, you know, there's a resolution on it already, but we want to see steps taken. And then Resolution 48-21 deals with cultural awareness in the Greek community, but we believe that that can also be appealed to police departments, both WSU and Pullman, so that there is that cultural awareness just for all of these organizations.
And then, so pretty much with all of this information that y'all know, y'all have, we kind of wanted to talk about the next steps that some of our senators do have this year. Senator Alcantara does have a resolution in mind, sorry to like put you in the spot right there, but to kind of just work with police departments, both WCU and Pullman, to try to like tackle the issue of the Daily Evergreen to talk about earlier this year, about how our black students are being targeted, rather than the counterparts, the white counterparts here in, on campus. There are also, there's a resolution that is talked about, about increasing safety within dorms, just kind of like having card swipe, other things like that, that's in progress to kind of help like keep students safe on campus when police aren't available, so. Is there any more to be?
That's it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, senators.
I'm gonna move things around a little bit from the order, so I'm gonna have Gary Jenkins, our police chief, come up here right now. We're gonna talk about code enforcement concerns on College Hill. I know Gary would probably address some of the issues in terms of training, because I know that we go through a number of different areas, the state academy, as he just can't say national, state academy, and also what you do locally, and plus the meetings you have with a multicultural center on a regular basis.
Sure.
And the police advisory committee and some of the other things you have going for you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, council, and SW, SW Senate. My understanding is that the statistics were based on Pullman, or WSU Police Department stats, is that accurate? At least that was what the Evergreen article said, it was WSU.
Yes.
Okay. So I can't speak to them. But I can talk about training as a whole in Washington State. There is a requirement, well, during, during the, the basic academy, officers do receive bias training. And then we do have advanced training for officers after they get out of the academy. When Jeff Gilleri was with WSU, Jeff Gilleri has been out to, to our police department and trained our staff on cultural competency. And then we send our staff through similar type training on a regular basis. So we do, we do have that type of training. That training is good, but I would, what I would say is what's more important is who we hire. We, we take a lot of time and to. We take a lot of time into our recruitment process and our background investigations. In fact, yesterday and today, we had four days of police officer interviews where I only had two of my staff on the interview panel. The other four people were community members, two were African-American females from WSU. So we take, we want to get a lot of input, and we want to hire people that can connect with all segments of the community here in Pullman. I think the training in Washington is, they're a leader in the nation. Recent report by the task force put together by Barack Obama when he was president, the academy, Washington Academy head was part of that task force, and you can see a lot of her fingerprints on that report. And a lot of it has to do with procedural justice and connecting with communities, and so that's what our academy has gone to, and so in that way, I think we're really a leader.
Thank you. And now we've got some code enforcement issues, and you've had some really good success stories with code enforcement, especially during the Thanksgiving time.
Right. So in late 2017, we realized we had a problem up in the College Hill Core area, particularly in the Greco area, during WSU breaks, when students would leave cars parked in that area during the breaks, and our public works crews cannot get up and clear away leaves or gravel or snow and ice, and cars would become encased in the snow and ice. And then the snow and ice would then spread out and essentially narrow the streets into a one-lane street. So it was brought to council, we took after public input, and so during WSU breaks now, parking is prohibited on certain streets in the public, in the College Hill Core area between 2:00 and 9:00 a.m., and this is the time when public works crews can get up and clear away leaves, gravel, and snow and ice. We've been doing this now, this is, we're just nearing the end of our second full year of doing that, and our public works crews tell us that they're able to get in there and clear out those areas. WSU has provided alternative parking for students who need a place to park during the breaks, and so it's been very successful so far, and our streets have been cleared. We also had a recent, a little bit off that topic, we had an incident on D Street on Dad's Weekend where a father fell and had a serious head injury. The street in that area, there had been a lot of illegal parking, and so our code enforcement went in, and they had ticketed some cars and towed some cars. And luckily, they did, because emergency crews would not have been able to get down that street and provide medical aid to that person if those cars were still in the same spot. So it's just an example of, a lot of times, people wonder why we give parking tickets. Well, that's a really good example of sometimes why we do that. Is there anything else you want to...
And the holiday parking regulation's coming up now, it's starting December 16th, I think.
Right. So, well, we just ended a fall, this last week during November, during Thanksgiving. We have another one coming up for the winter break, and we've been marketing that through news releases, our, the police department and the city Facebook and Twitter feed through ASWU, Fraternity and Sorority Life, and the WSU Evergreen. So we're trying to get the message out as much as we can. And then the other thing that we're doing in code enforcement is we're really, we're really trying to focus on trash as one area, trash overflowing from trash containers and dumpsters, and so a lot of times, that's involving fraternities and sororities or apartment complexes, and so we're working with them to try to get the right-sized containers and the right pickup so that they'll be compliant with our code, and also leaving trash bins out on the street. One of the things that the Subcommittee of the Town and Gown Collaborative is the College Hill Matters Subcommittee, and their focus is really walkability of College Hill Core area. And so having trash cans out days past trash day really impacts the walkability of that area, as does the snow and ice on the sidewalks. And so we're doing a really big marketing campaign for clearing sidewalks and also for trash, and our code enforcement people have been out there working on that a lot. I just got my water bill today with a snow removal brochure in it, so those went out with the water bills as well. They're out giving warnings initially and working with people to try to get them compliant, but ultimately, it could end with enforcement to incentivize them to become compliant.
All right. Nathan, and then Brandon. I'd like to, we bring this up just about every year, but I think it bears reminding about the leash laws. I know personally, at McGee Park, if anybody knows where that is, many people decide to let their dogs kind of run without leash. And they say constantly, when I'm there, I'm the, I'm kind of the curmudgeon out there, telling people, hey, put your dog back on a leash, and the response, always, always, he's fine, be cool. You know, I know my dog, he's fine. Well, I will tell you this, last year, that happened with three dogs, three dogs. They were all off-leash. I asked the owners to please put them on me, and it's not always students, I'm not saying just students, this is everybody. You know, the dogs ended up rushing my dog, knocked him over, bit him.
He's got a big dog, too, I just want you to know that.
He's a 90-pound, you'll see me walking around WSU with my white Siberian Husky. He's a Cougar fan. But knocked him over, bit him. I talked to these students who they, and they said, you know, our dog is fine, he's no problem, no problem. And just as they said, it was perfect timing, comedic timing, the dog ripped out of the guy's hand and charged my dog again and bit him in the neck and punctured. And then couldn't find the student because the dog had to go to the vet. So I want everybody to keep in mind, even I think I know my dog and how he's going to behave, but if you're owning a dog, it's a responsibility, and that's a wild animal. It's still a wild animal, no matter how much training you have on him. But I would at least like Chief to explain some of the leash laws regarding dogs in our community.
And as a professor up there on campus, I've seen a number of people letting their dogs loose on campus, which they don't appreciate that as well, so.
Yeah, well, anytime that your dog is off your own property, they're required to be on a leash. And I did run some stats, and so far, so far this year, we've issued 22 warnings and aid infractions at areas all throughout the city, the city playfields and various parks and in residential neighborhoods. And we do get a lot of calls on those violations, and we can actually take enforcement action based on witness statement, and the officer doesn't have to see it, so. Definitely, the people that you know that own pets, it's just a safe practice anyway, but it is a violation as well. Another thing that you mentioned, Mayor, was mental health, and sometimes that's a factor in homelessness as well, and all of our staff have been through what's called mental health first-day training. We're setting up for a refresher course again early this year, and then we're also providing that to all of our city staff in February. So that, all of our staff will be trained in that. I know WSU PD also goes through the same training.
Brad, you have...
Yeah, no, I'm going to get back to parking issues. So you mentioned garbage, and I know a lot of these, these big dumpsters are in alleys, and many of these alleys say to not park, so is there an emphasis on parking in alleys where they're not supposed to be parking, where Pullman's folks can't get in there to empty those?
Yeah, in fact, our, the committee, the College Hill Matters Committee, Devin Felsted's on that committee as well, and so we work closely with his staff to address those types of situations where they can't get to the trash, and so we, our code enforcement officers work with him to address those issues specifically.
The, thank you. And the other question was, I don't remember if it was Lentle Festival or a football game or whatever with the drones that was used for code enforcement, like, some kind of parking code enforcement, if I heard that right. Are we using a drone to be able to see?
You're saying during Lentle Festival?
Or a football game or something.
We had used a drone pre-game one time to assess the traffic issues that we were having and determine the feasibility of temporarily closing the street during part of the pre-game. I can't think of the time we've really used it in a code enforcement way.
I assure you that WSU has a ton of cameras for football that's in their command post there, too, all around campus.
Did you have one more thing you want to add? Just one more thing with the mental health. I just want ASWU to understand how important mental health is to the city of Pullman. This has been a part of our goals for the last, I think, two or three years or more. I know Councilmember Parks sits on a, is it a joint mental health committee?
Campus and Community Mental Health Task Force commissioned by President Schultz, and so we're working on coordinating efforts and resources between the campus and the community so that everybody can use everything and know where to access those resources.
I just wanted to mention that.
Great.
And another part of that, if I could, just one more, Mayor, is to add on to what Jeff said and what Nathan said about homelessness, is we, when our staff come into contact with someone, Community Action Center is such a great resource that if someone wants to get out of homelessness, that they help them do that, but a lot of times, we contact them at nights and the weekends, and so there's a community relief fund through the Poverty Awareness Task Force that we have vouchers for hotels to be able to put people up until they can get connected with Community Action Center. So it's a lot of moving parts, working together to take care of that problem.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. We've mentioned trash a number of times tonight, so we want, we have Rick Finch and Devin Felsted that are with us tonight, Home Disposal and from WSU Recycling, and we want to do some updates with all of us here, because the recycling system is changing daily, it seems like, and we want to make sure that everybody knows what we're taking. And Rick, you're doing it from WSU, and Devin's doing it from the city standpoint, so. Devin, get up there with Rick, and then you can flip a coin as who's going first.
Devin's turn to go first.
Okay, Devin's going first.
So, yeah, I, we actually have just started running a new commercial about the changes in recycling, trying to help clear up any of the confusion. And basically, where we are is, in the last few years, the recycling markets have plunged, and unfortunately, 2019 has not seen any improvement. In fact, prices have continued to fall through 2019. Just to give you some kind of context, it cost us $110 to dump garbage at the county landfill. Currently, cardboard, they're charging us $54 to have it recycled, so it's about half the cost of garbage.
We're talking per ton, right?
Per ton. And commingled recycling, they are charging us $182 per ton to drop it off, so it's more than 50% the cost of dumping it as garbage. So pricing is tough. What we have done is, we've continued to operate the curbside program the same as before, except we've taken glass out. Everything on the label of your recycling cart is correct except for glass. We have replaced some of the roll carts, so the lid, some of the roll carts have labels that say no glass, and some of them are the old ones that say glass, but the rule is no glass, but everything else on the label continues to be correct. The way we've been paying for the plunge in market prices is the recycling commodity fee that's been added to everyone's bill, and that's adjusted every six months. It's like, it's not that much, amazingly, it's like a $1.60 or $1.80 a month per household, and that covers the cost, the drop in the recycling value. And in fact, so we apply for that every six months. A year ago, when we applied for that, the UTC, Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission, they commented that this is all fine, but they saw that, or they noted that we had not been in for a full rate case, where they come in and examine the whole business and all our costs and do an audit of us since 2013. And so because of that, they said we needed to do one this year, and we are in the process of a full rate case. In fact, the UTC representatives will be at our office tomorrow doing something, well, they call it a site visit, I think it's a, just a polite way to say an audit. So anyway, we're doing the, we're doing a full rate case, so rates should be changing in January. As far as, as far as recycling, I just, we try to make it simple. Haven't made any changes, can still do plastic bottles, one through seven. We don't want any other kind of plastics. We don't want trays, we don't want clamshells, we just want the plastic bottles, one through seven. All mixed paper, including newspaper, junk mail, magazines, they're still going to the roll cart, and so, and our staff, they love to answer questions, so you can always call them if you have any questions.
Okay. Rick, would you like to tell us what's going on at WSU, because I know you've been at the forefront of some of those recycling efforts, too.
Greetings to ASWU Senate. I work for you guys and the Council and Mr. Mayor. So at WSU, you know, we have been very carefully monitoring the world recycling market for really the last two and a half years. It's been very dynamic, a lot of change, and if you've been around for a few years, you've noticed that our system has gone through some changes. That's one of the things that, the, the having our own waste systems, where we're our own waste hauler, we're our own recycler, we run our own composting program, we can be a little bit more nimble in our ability to make changes at the university and, you know, and react to things that a land-grant research university would need. So we probably have a little bit more flexibility to react. So what we learned, we knew that this was coming in late 2016, early 2017, and, but, you know, the impacts on the market, as Devin said, are catastrophic. It costs more to recycle mixed stream or single-stream recycling than it does to landfill it, and that's really not sustainable. We, what we have, so we made a change starting last winter, about this time, second semester, is we started to very carefully monitor areas where we were getting a lot of contamination. When these changes came into place, the world was told that this is due to contaminated material, you know, damage in the markets, in the international markets. That is partially true. The main buyer of the world's recycling, China, really effectively closed its doors. They were receiving a lot of garbage from around the world, not just the United States, and what that did was then it created supply chain problems. So now there is just not the capacity in the world without the Chinese markets to process the recycling that is generated, so there's no place for it to go. So what we did was, we tried to eliminate what was the contaminated material. So this is material from largely residential buildings, places that serve food, and our people that doing the in-building recycling started doing some sorting. So we came up with what was actually a very... up with what was actually a very clean co-mingled product, very little food or, or liquid contamination to it. We started, uh, marketing some of that and we were still getting the same pricing that, uh, that Devin and the rest of the state is getting for, uh, curbside, uh, type of recycling. So the moral of that story is it is not just contamination. It's a real market issue. So I have pressed the people that we sell the recycling to and we, we market our commodity competitively amongst two of the bigger, uh, recycling companies in, in the world. And, uh, and one of them has said, well, your problem is, is when we grade your, uh, material out, you're 90% mixed grade paper. So that's a combination of, uh, newspaper, brown papers, uh, everything mixed together. And right now, that is the biggest negative in our recycling stream. So they have told us that if we could only collect materials that have a commodity value, they will pay us for our recycling. So we have initiated over about the last eight to 10 weeks, a program where you've probably seen the signage change on campus, that what we're, we, we have never gone all in on single stream. We have always had separate cardboard collection and we have, um, also had separate office paper collection. Both of those still retain a positive market value to us. And so, um, we're able to market those, uh, for a little money, but about a hundred dollars a ton less than what we were getting paid two years ago. Um, but now what we're collecting is number one and number two plastics and, um, aluminum and steel cans. And those are the four commodities. We don't use the term, uh, co-mingled anymore. We'll call it, you know, our mixed recycling or cans and bottles. And so, um, we have not been able to mark, we have not tried to market that yet. We did just ship some, uh, in our last shipment of co-mingled. We shipped one bale to, uh, the Spokane Murph. They're going to evaluate it for us and then offer pricing in the future. We've got another company who has said they will pay us positive for it. So, um, what we've done is, you know, we're, we're making our focus to be committed to recycling at what makes sense. I, I don't think it serves anybody to, you know, uh, for us to believe that just because we put it in a recycling container, it's going to be recycled and processed into a new commodity because that is just not true. And it hasn't been for some time, even prior to the world changes. So we're learning a lot after the fact now. So what we have to do is we have to be realistic on, on what is value. Now, what I know by following the markets is that there is infrastructure developing in the United States. Several Chinese companies are, are purchasing and building plants in the United States. And so what we're starting-
Hopefully on the West Coast.
Well, some of it is. But it's, it's, it's all over. Um, but what we're seeing is, we're seeing a, an increase in, in domestic processing of recyclers into added value products that will in turn end up being exported because there still is a demand for certain things. And so I think ongoing, the lesson we have learned about contamination is going to be an important one going forward. Uh, we need to continue to teach that and recognize it. I think the markets will recover. That's why our signs are printed off on our own printers and laminated and look like I drew them with a color crayon, um, because, you know, we realize this is going to change again, probably a couple of times before things settle out. So, um, you know, be prepared for that change. Uh, we're trying to do the best we can. I'm happy to interact with student groups, uh, you know, such as the senator, individual senators and provide more information. So.
Well, thank you very much for that update. We appreciate it. And that concludes the topics that we were going to do tonight. And so why don't we just take a, Hannah, again, thank you so much for having us out here.
Thank you for having us.
I know we have another date coming up and we'll find out when that's going to be. Uh, we definitely appreciate meeting with you. And, uh, next time you'll have some topics for us too.
And we will have food for you as well.
See, we have a tight budget because we're trying to run transit here. So with that, why don't we take a five-minute break and then we'll reconvene in our council meeting here for the rest of our agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to our council meeting. We just finished our joint meeting with ASWESU. Item D in our agenda tonight is confirmation appointment. I am recommending to the council, Mary Schweitzer, to the cemetery. And ask for your confirmation for your motion.
So moved.
Nathan Pat.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We've got the motion and the second.
I did have one question.
Yes.
It said, what's for a year through December 2020?
Until 2020, and it's an expired term, and then normally they can reapply.
Thank you.
We've got a motion and a second. Alos in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, the presentation from Bob Maxwell. It's your turn next. And Bob, thanks for being here tonight. And I know you have a school bond coming up here in February.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, council members and guests. And I have our finance director, Diane Hodge, with me tonight to help with the presentation. So thank you for this opportunity to educate you on one of the most important upcoming items in the February election, and that is our bond and levy. So we will have two replacement levies on the February 11th election. We will also have a bond. Of course, levies are for learning, so L for learning. And a levy is a local property tax, as you know, that helps generate revenue for the operation costs of our school district that bridge that gap between what the state and federal government provides and what it actually takes to run and operate a school district. And of course, a bond, we always like to say B is for building. And as you know, we've had quite aggressive growth in the community, and we have taken care of Pullman High School. We have added an elementary and added on to two of our other elementaries. But now we do have to take care of the issue at Lincoln Middle School. And we definitely need to renovate and expand. So these are just some of the things that our local levy pays for. And you can see it's quite a list. You probably recognize some of the folks in the photos. So our local levy, which is about 14% of our operating costs, helps to fund everything from athletics, arts, music, professional development, safety, security, on and on, extra staffing. Like I said, this helps bridge the gap. I'll give you a quick example. If you look at nursing services, currently, the state provides us with enough of an allocation to fund a .3 nurse. .3. We actually have four nurses that serve six schools. So that's just an idea of why that levy is so important to bridge that gap. And I'm going to turn this over to Diane, since she's the money person.
So one of the things we really want to emphasize on this is this is a replacement levy. This just replaces our current $5.5 million levy. We used to have our technology levy incorporate or separate from our current levy. One of the things I want to also talk about is this is an, it's now called an enrichment levy. It used to be called our maintenance and operations levy, but the legislatures, the legislature changed the title on us because it's now student only. It's a four-year levy. When we went out in 2016, the community approved $2.75 as to what we can collect. It's currently coming in at $2.42. The value here should be eight cents. I'm not sure why it's not showing up on this computer. The tech levy, we're separating that out because, as you know, the legislature capped our assessed valuation at $1.50 per $1,000 of assessed value. So we cannot collect currently in 2018 and 2019, we cannot collect our full levy because of that $1.50 cap. So we are pulling that technology levy back out, so the $5.3 million enrichment levy will now go back down to $5.3 million, and we will have another $200,000 technology levy. So our proposed levy is going to be approximately $2.33 when we start collecting in 2021. And this is just a tax rate trend and projection. When we go out to the community, we like to say that we're going to keep our, all of our bond and our levies under $6. And we're well within, with, under our $6. This is our technology levy since 2010. It started out at 10 cents per thousand dol, or yeah, 10, 10 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation, and it's down to eight cents. And this is our bond. The peaks here, that's when we went out for the bond for Pullman High School. That's when we went out for the bond for Cameo. And again, you can just see it's declining because the assessed valuation in Pullman with the, the growth has increased so much. And then the, the green is our enrichment levy slash maintenance and operations levy. And as you can see, it's just slowly declining because Pullman is growing so rapidly. And again, we have a technology levy, $200,000 each year from 2021 to 2024, and it pays for our computer technology infrastructure, software for the kids. 95% of this $200,000 goes directly to the students in the classroom. And I'll turn it back over to you.
So this past summer, one of the things that occurred is we gathered together a Capital Projects Advisory Committee, which approximately was 20 members, a mixture of community members, staff, administration. The purpose of this community group was to take a look at the needs regarding the growth and renovation for Lincoln Middle School. We held forums, staff meetings, two online surveys to gather information from our community and our staff and our parents regarding what they saw as the absolute needs for a renovation and expansion of Lincoln Middle School. Based on different groups, whether it was teachers, parents, community members, they were almost identical in the top five that were identified. This group worked all summer into the fall, and at the end, came up with two recommendations for our school board to consider. The first was to provide adequate funds for the renovation and expansion of Lincoln Middle School to relieve overcrowding, upgrade our safety and security, and meet projected enrollment trends. As you know, right now, in Lincoln Middle School, you can walk right in the front door, bypass the office, and you can go anywhere in that school. Right now, you can see, if you tried to travel down the hallways, it's very, very crowded. And we know that we have more kids coming in the pipeline. The second recommendation was to provide adequate funds for cooling system upgrades to improve, approve health and safety at our three elementary schools, which currently do not have any HVAC or cooling systems. That would be Franklin, Jefferson, and Sunnyside Elementary. All total, those projects would come to a $15 million, 20-year bond. Just to give you a little more background, Lincoln Middle School was built in 1963. It was designed for 350 students. It was upgraded in 2004 or 05, or renovated and expanded to accommodate between 500 and 600 students. That bond in 2004 or 05 expires in December 2020. It will go to zero. Currently, we have 691 students as of September in Lincoln Middle School right now. So we definitely have a need. And if you look at the Office of Public Instruction, in 2024, they estimate we'll have 717 students. Well, if you look at, we're almost 700 right now. I think we're going to hit that number way before 2024. And in 2030, they predict we'll have between 750 and 800 students. So the time is, is just perfect for us to take advantage of running a bond and meeting the needs that exist now and prepare for the future. The bond priorities specifically for the Lincoln remodel and expansion, eight additional classrooms, then large common space, add air conditioning and cooling system, a new drop-off and pickup zone. So if you've ever had that experience, this will be way, way much better than now. Add some much-needed science labs, additional restrooms, security, replace the roof, which is now ending its lifespan, and upgrade technology. This is an actual photo from the second week of school. You can see poor Mr. Grow is right here, up against the wall, monitoring hallway activities. Very, very narrow hallway. By adding on eight classrooms, we can go to more of a sixth-grade wing, seventh and eighth grade, which during transition times should provide adequate transitioning space for our students to not only travel from class to class, but access their lockers as And I'll turn it over to Diane again.
So this is a kind of a noisy spreadsheet here. But what I want you to focus on, this is the approved levy amount. In 2021, we're going out for $5.3 million for our enrichment levy, $200,000 for our tech levy. So again, replacement levy. What I want you to focus on is the assessed valuation here. Our assessed valuation average between 2015 and 2019 is 6.03%. When we go out to the community, we do a conservative 2%, so we're not underestimating what the cost will be per $1,000 of assessed valuation. And a couple weeks ago, we just found out, so right here, we're showing 2% in 2021, 22, 23, and 24. We had estimated, we, one of the questions we got when we went out to the community and did all the surveys is, we want to make sure this bond is not going to cost us any additional money. So in order to make that happen, this would have to come in at 4% and potentially 3%, which are still real conservative numbers based upon the fact we're averaging, averaging 6.3. But a couple weeks ago, we received from the assessor's office that we're certifying in at 7.81%. With that 7.81% assessed valuation increase means this bond will not cost one additional penny. So we're currently paying $2.78. With a $15 million bond at 7.81% increase right here, this will still cost $2.78 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. So this will not cost anything more than what you are currently paying on your current assessed valuation. And then, most likely in 2022, it'll just keep rising, is our prediction. And so again, it'll just continually decrease as it is currently decreasing since the Cameo bond. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I do.
Go ahead.
Yep.
So who's in the taxing area?
It is the school district, 200-mile radius school district, and not WSC, because WSC does not pay taxes. And so it's just the...
Much larger than the hospital district.
Pretty much larger.
So outside of, outside of the city of Pullman?
Correct.
You go to Albion?
We go out to Albion, all the way out to Almoda, all the way down to the Colby border, and then out toward, so it's about 200 square miles, it brings.
And it's the taxing is equal as included, the city of Pullman versus Timmer County? The tax rate is the same?
So we are estimating come 2021 that this $5 here will actually be $4.98 total for the bond, the tech levy, the enrichment levy, and the bond. So we were pretty excited to get that 7.81% certified amount, so we can actually tell the taxpayers that, no, this will not cost any additional money than what you're currently paying in 2019, because that was the biggest concern that we had. Want to go one more? So we are encouraging everyone, we can educate, we can't advocate, to vote February 11th. We need to make sure we certify for this bond. Like Bob said, we use that, every penny of that $5.3 million to supplement the school district. I know you've heard 100 times over that the state is fully funding education, but they truly are not if they think a .3 of a nurse will, will be functional for six schools. So it pays for several positions and utilities, et cetera. So we just want to encourage everyone to vote February 11th. It's very important. As far as I know, we're the only ones on the ballot, February 11th. So we just want to reiterate that it's very important to vote.
So have you got a validation number, what you need in February?
Don't have the validation number yet, no.
May I ask a question about Lincoln Middle School and long-term plans? With our growing elementary population and adding an elementary school, how long can we continue to try to expand Lincoln before we, would there be thought of a second middle school at some point in the future?
So we think we're well set to meet the, the need in the far, in the future with this expansion and renovation. However, we always want to be looking further into the future to make sure that we don't get behind. So we are actively involved in searching for property for an additional school, whether that may be another elementary or another middle school or some other facility that we may need. So we are constantly planning ahead to make sure that we have a spot.
Yeah.
Which is the most difficult thing to find in the Pullman community, is something relatively flat and large enough for a large building.
Yes, thank you. And this, well, has the capacity of 850. So if the bond were to pass and we added the eight additional classrooms, it would have the capacity to hold 850 kids. Thank you.
Brendan.
Yeah, no, I appreciate this. I, I've worked with kids in the school district, so I'm very familiar with all of these reasons why, why we want to look at this. It's easy to throw out the term "bond fatigue," which I know we've heard of, but is there anything that you've learned from the city's bond that we did, the hospital's bond, the hospital's next bond? I mean, things that you've learned that you think, you know, you're, you plan on, on using to better communicate with, with the public and, and, you know, convince residents that this is important, it's vital?
Absolutely. I think one, one advantage that we have, I think we have a pretty clear succinct message of exactly what we're asking for, and it's, impacts everyone. As you know, quality schools make a quality community. We're also out advertising and doing presentations for the last month and a half, so well before the February, because we're getting out early on, getting questions, trying to inform and educate our community as much as possible. One of the things that we really want to focus on, also our parents, and making sure they're aware and that they do vote. It's very, very important. I think we have a very clear message. We also will be using multiple platforms and have a series of videos that have been developed, and we'll be slowly putting those out, so there's a constant message. And so, very, very important for our community. This is one of the main things that when folks are considering moving to Pullman, or even Moscow for that matter, we get a lot of calls for tours. And they will tour both Moscow School District and Pullman School District. That is one of the main decisions, deciding whether they will move and seek employment in our community, is the schools.
The HVAC is pretty important.
And HVAC, and, and by the way, with the committee, that was a, that was a real discussion. Is that a luxury or a need? And at the end, it was unanimous vote by all 20 members that to include the cooling system, because really what we found is a lot of our community didn't realize, we use the schools year-round, even in summer, summer school, YMCA, parks and rec, churches. Our schools are used all year, almost every day.
Thank you.
So thank you for the question.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much for the time. We appreciate it.
Now, move the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature. Do I hear a motion to reflect title only?
So moved, second.
Move and second, all those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with that? Laura McAllo.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Whitman County Humane Society for the calendar year 2020, and a motion to ratify change order number one to the path's 2019 contract.
Is there any item the council would like out for discussion?
Yes.
Alan, item number two. Okay. Then do I hear a motion on item number one to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Move and second, all those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with that? Item number two, Alan.
Kevin, just real quickly here, we got the path done from Finner Street up to the top of the hill. My questions are on this, that's great. We're going to, or have we already started recouping the money from the developer? Or where are we at on that?
We will. We just have to claim against the letter of credit.
Okay, Laura, how, how soon can we do that? And what's the process?
Well, the process will be following the requirements, the notice requirements that are set out in the letter of credit. And once the council approves this change, then we would be able to proceed with that.
Okay. I suggest that we proceed with that as quickly and as, by the day as we can. Secondly, I have a question in regards to the second part here, the northern portion of the pedestrian path from Panorama to Lost Trails, though needs to be constructed. Can you explain to me what that path is?
Sure. And I'm not sure if all council members were here when we discussed this path, so if you have questions, I can certainly help answer them. This related to a requirement in one of the Whispering Hills subdivisions, and I believe it was number nine, and that included the piece that was south of Panorama that got constructed recently, if you've been out there. And then there was a section about one lot deep that would go north from Panorama and eventually would connect up to Lost Trail. The problem we have is that the pedestrian easement that's associated with Whispering Hills number nine doesn't continue north from the northern boundary of that subdivision. So the city has easements in that area. They have a waterline easement. I think Avista has a powerline easement that's about 50 feet wide. So we would either have to construct the path partly on a pedestrian easement through Whispering Hills nine, and then the remainder would be over the waterline easement, potentially. Or what I'm proposing, after talking with the city attorney, is, I've already had a conversation with one of the property owners out there about the path that doesn't currently have a pedestrian easement, and they, they were somewhat open to the idea of perhaps granting the city an easement under certain conditions. And so I'd like to talk to, one, there's two other property owners, one of which is the Atanis, and I haven't had a conversation with them yet, but I will. And then there's another property owner in one of the subdivisions. And if everyone's open to the idea of a pedestrian easement, then we would pursue that. Otherwise, I'd probably come back to council and ask for direction on how you'd like me to proceed with the path going north from Panorama.
So was that path not part of the requirement of the developer?
Only up to the boundary, subdivision boundary of subdivision number nine.
Okay, so the path from Panorama to Lost Trail is not part of that?
Just a portion, a few hundred feet.
There's a gap.
Okay, I'm looking at your...
Yeah.
Picture.
Yeah. So there's a, a note that says, "Future work construct 10-foot by 525-foot HMA access." So about 200 feet of that, plus or minus, is what remains within the subdivision that we can construct. But right now, if we just construct that 200 feet, it doesn't have a connection, there's that gap. So what I'd like to do is explore obtaining easement so that we can finish that connection. It wouldn't necessarily be paid for out of subdivision proceeds, security, because that wasn't a requirement of that subdivision, but it would allow for the full connection across there. And instead of just constructing the 200 feet, I felt it was prudent to explore the easement option first, and then bring it back to council with either we can get an easement to take it all the way through, or we can't, and what would you like to do with that, that 200 feet that was required in Whispering Hills number nine? Would you like us to construct that, get that piece in, and then hope we can get the pedestrian easements later, if we can get them up front? So that, that's the strategy, what our thinking is.
Where's the 200 feet on this line?
It would be just due north from Panorama.
Just, so 200 feet from Panorama, north?
Plus or minus, yeah. It's one lot depth.
Okay. Well, the path that we just finished putting in is fine, but we, we need to finish this out. So I think you need to continue in negotiations and talk with the property owners as you're doing now, because this is important, that if we don't finish this, what we just made them put in, basically, because we're charging them money for it, is for not to go down to that other path. So it's, it's my opinion that we need to continue on with this as much as possible.
That's our plan.
Then do I hear a motion to ratify this change order?
Move to ratify change order number one. Second.
Move second. The motion to ratify change order number one to the path's 2019 contract. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now move to the regular agenda tonight. And the first item is a resolution amending a fee for parks and recreation programs. Kirk Gaimans on tap.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening, for your consideration and approval, is our 2020 program and facility use fee schedule. At our November 13th Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, commission members endorsed the changes that I'll discuss with you in the memo. These are just new fees or charges or those that staff have elected to add or modify. Would just add before I start the discussion is that this is probably the most challenging year facing Parks and Recreation and others, just due to the fact of the minimum wage increase from 12 to $15 and, or 12 to $13.50. And to put that into perspective is, within Parks and Recreation, we budget approximately 30,000 hours in part-time employees, just in recreation and aquatics. So not all those 30,000 hours are going to see an increase, but you can see it is going to be an impact to us. So the challenge kind of comes is, you know, how do we cover our expenditures? But also, in the back of, you know, our minds is, you know, what is our philosophy as a Parks and Recreation and Public Services as well? So just kind of keeping that in mind. So I'm just going to work off my memo, because these are strictly just the changes that we're making. I believe in your packet is the entire fee schedule, if there are any other questions at the end of the presentation. So starting under facility rental, our RV park, increasing that from 30 to $35 a night, with the addition of our pickleball courts at Sunnyside and Krugel Park, adding a fee if there was going to be a tournament play, if somebody wanted to basically reserve those courts, would be $5 per court per hour. Otherwise, it's just first come, first served. Working down the list there, one addition to our facility rental is the nonprofit rates. So adding that column will all be new. The only change under that is at Sunnyside Gym, under supervised activities, is our regular rates from 20 to 25. And then down there, Recreation Building is our new facility we're moving into, and the fees that will be associated with those classrooms and the gym and kitchen there as well. Youth sports, tiny tykes T-ball, our T-ball Rookie League program, soccer, basketball, football, volleyball, middle school soccer and girls softball, increasing all those player fees by $5. Preschool, raising our daily fee, which is three hours, and either the morning or afternoon will go from $15 to $16 per day, and this would not go in effect until in September for our 2020, 21 school year, or calendar year. Under adult sports, raising our co-ed soccer program from 500 to $555 per team. Under rainy pool, our daily emissions for youth seniors and our household pass, all increasing 25 cents per drop-in. Under pool rental, increasing our hourly rate for either the lap or recreation pool at rainy from 125 to 140 per hour, or rent the entire facility from 200 to 225. And then if we do need to add additional staff after every 15 people that are part of the rental, increasing that rate from 25 to 30. And then if there's some accessories, which we have kind of tubes and boats and different things there, increasing that from 20 to $25 an hour. Moving to the Aquatic Center, kind of the same as I just proposed, rainy pool, those quarter increases, and then individuals that have other club memberships, increasing from $3 to $4 per visit. Group swimming lessons, kind of a restructuring of this program. Under what we used to call our infant, we're based on $12 per instruction hour. Those will be renamed parent-child and preschool, and those will be based on $7.50 per class. Under youth, that'll now be classified... Under youth, that'll now be classified kind of our Learn to Swim program, and those will be based on $9.50, as well as the restructuring of our adult, from $12 per instruction hour to $9.50 per class. Pool rentals under the Aquatic Center, basically just following the same formula as proposed for rentals at rainy pool. The web rental, this is our inflatable structure that we put out as kind of a fun play structure on Fridays generally at rainy pool or at the Aquatic Center, and that increase seen from $30 to $40 an hour, plus increasing $60 to $75 for the installation and take-down fee. Our administrative fee when we process refunds, increasing that from $10 to $15 per hour. And then within our program fee policy, eliminating the administrative fee from, basically eliminating the 10 to 30 percent and just classifying that as an administrative fee will be added to our programs, which vary based on what the activity is and the nature of those. So those are the fees that we've elected to add or modify. So I'll take any questions on those, or if there's anything else within the entire fee schedule that you have questions about.
Questions to Kirk.
Yeah.
I'll lead first.
This is maybe just a little bit off topic. Was there a problem with the pickleball courts that they needed to be repaired? There was maybe a warranty item on the pickleball courts? I'm sorry if this is...
That is still being in discussion. Design West is the lead architect on that project, so they are still having discussions with the contractor. I would expect they will be back here, the contractor, probably in the spring or once the weather improves, to address some of those concerns. And I think what they classify as some hairline cracking and what we are actually seeing are two different things. So, yeah, it was, obviously, it was surprising to see that appear four to six weeks after we were done and opened the courts. So there is discussion still going on.
But it is under warranty?
Yeah.
Brandon.
Yeah, so I guess a comment, it's super important to have very affordable programming. And just to give some context, I saw girls softball, $65 per player. We're giving a great deal. The baseball, Little League baseball is about $120, $130. So I think we're doing a good job keeping things affordable for anybody. And that baseball cost, this is not travel ball. This is just normal, run-of-the-mill Little League type stuff. So I think we're doing a good job not pricing people out, even with that increase that we need here for, you know, for finance purposes. Just, do we not host any kind of tournaments at the tennis courts?
At tennis courts? We haven't previously. I would expect that now with the pickleball. I think there's a little group that's organized or whatever. I'd expect them to come forward probably this summer or whatever and try to do some, host some tournaments here. I know there's a group that travels around that, you know, I think they're probably excited to stay home for a chance and have people come to our community. So, yeah, I think we'll see some of this coming here.
On the tennis, though?
On the tennis, no.
Okay.
We haven't.
Any others? Then do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt R-79-19. Second.
Second. Laura.
Resolution number R-79-19, a resolution amending a fee schedule for parks and recreation programs and facility use effective January 1, 2020.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two is another resolution adopting a care-to-share policy and standalone policy. Again, Kirk.
Really, this is just a housekeeping item. The care-to-share policy in front of you for years has always been part of the fee schedule that you just adopted. When we modified the care-to-share policy mid-year in the spring of 2018, at that time it was recommended by city attorney McAluin that if, when we, next time we adopt, let's pull this out separately and make it its own policy. So if we do want to alter it mid-year, then we're only changing the care-to-share policy and not amending the entire fee schedule. So that's really what's before you.
Questions of this? This is, you know, this has always been important for us to be able to help if they don't have the money, Brandon, and this is something we've done for a long, long time. Been involved with it for a while, and it's a good thing that we have this available. How do we let people know that it's available?
We usually, through the community update around the first of the year, we usually do a little bit of announcement in that it's in our Parks and Rec brochure, it's on our website. And really, within the community, the word spreads about it, especially in the summer with our, generally we receive some money from Pullman Child Welfare, and this last year, Emmanuel Baptist Church donated some money for swim passes. So the word is kind of out there. You know, I think we could always do more outreach. This, so far this year, we have given 165 scholarships in an amount of a little over 4,000. It'd always be nice to do a little more, but we've been fortunate to receive some donations, like I mentioned. One thing we did this year as a department, we had always had a fun run in the fall, but we had the opportunity to take over the Tasty Lental 5K Run as part of Lental Fest and kind of coordinate that. And, you know, we took our numbers to having 65, 75 people participate to over 200. So, you know, we were able to increase, you know, what we're able to provide to the program, and hopefully we can increase our scholarship amount down the road.
Excellent. And it's also good to know that you can do this before the end of the year, you can donate, and it's also helps on your tax.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Community Action Center, they know about this, they have the information regarding this as well?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, awesome, very cool. Any other questions or comments? Then do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution Number R-80-19. Second.
Second. Laura.
Resolution Number R-80-19, a resolution adopting a care-to-share policy as a standalone policy separate from the fee schedule for parks and recreation programs and facility use.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next resolution before you, as Kevin Curtis will be doing, to give the mayor the Finance and Administrative Services Director, execute a project perspective and local agency agreement for arterial streets. Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. The arterial streets resurfacing 2020 project includes resurfacing of the following streets on Pioneer Hill. Spring Street from Main Street to Crestview Street. Crestview Street from Spring Street to Kell Star Drive. Harvest Drive from Kell Star to Bishop Boulevard. Non-compliant ADA curb ramps will be upgraded within the project limits, and that'll be pretty much all of them. Traffic calming measures are also being proposed. The total estimated project cost is $1.1,828,000. The project will be primarily funded with a federal grant estimated at $1,559,400, or approximately 86.5 percent of the project total. The remainder will come from the city's arterial street fund. We expect to complete design work by next spring and start construction next May after WSU spring semester. We upgraded sanitary and storm sewer lines along the project route earlier this year under a separate construction contract. In order to authorize the project with WashDOT and obligate federal funding for engineering design work, a project prospectus, and local agency agreement have been prepared for council action, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Yeah, Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is this, is this related to the resurfacing that we were discussing, the grading of the different streets, which ones needed to be resurfaced?
No, this, we're, that'll be a council presentation probably early next year. We're working through the final stages with our consultant right now who did that work.
You just had all the streets graded.
Yeah.
You haven't just got those reports back yet.
Yeah, we'll make a council presentation early next year on that. This is, every three years or so, we program in an arterial streets project, and so we pick a major arterial that needs help. We've done Stadium Way, we've done a bunch on College Hill. This time it's Pioneer Hill, and these are the streets that we selected. So after this project, we'll probably use the rating system to come up with the next arterial streets project. But that'll be three years down.
I know it's a big project. Thank you so much.
It's gonna be nice. I remember what Kevin Kirkman said about Spring Street here, so just have it at all. Yeah, it'd be nice.
Spring Street, I just, the last couple times I've driven up, tried to drive up it with my little tiny Chevy Spark, it's made me switch to drive my truck when I have to go up there.
Do I hear one? Yes.
I just have a comment. Spring Street is becoming a very busy arterial, and I think it's another avenue for people to traverse the city from College Hill, going either to Walmart or to Safeway. And the traffic on Spring Street has been increasing lots. And I know that parking on both sides of the street leads to self-imposed slowing down, but it also impedes people from, I mean, I was on Spring Street last night, and it took almost five minutes to get from the Derby and Spring to Crestview, just because of traffic coming, you know, the opposite direction and having cars parked on either side of the street and pulling over to let somebody go by. So I only mention that just kind of as an observation that with all of this going on, it's only going to continue to be used that much more. So we need to be thinking about alternatives in terms of parking, traffic slowing, all those kinds of things that we've got going on in other areas. But Spring seems to be growing exponentially in regards.
Mayor, may I ask you, so I know on Harvest up through part of Spring Street, there are no center lines, but then once you start going down Spring Street, all of a sudden you have a middle line. And I'm just curious when this gets resurfaced, if we're going to go away from any middle lines there?
That would be my intent.
Any other questions?
No.
Do I hear a motion on this resolution then? Move to adopt.
Second.
Second. Laura.
Resolution Number R-81-19, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the Finance and Administrative Services Director to execute a project prospectus and local agency agreement for the arterial streets resurfacing 2020 project.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four is a motion to authorize execution of agreement for misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor prosecution, indigent defense, adjudication, and incarceration costs with Whitman County for the year 2020. With that, Laura McAluin, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for pronouncing the entire title, so I'm going to just call it the agreement. So as you know, the 2008 to 2012 agreement has, with the county, for the indigent defense and prosecution and adjudication and incarceration services expired on December 31 of 2012, and the parties have just mutually continued to perform under that agreement. As the city has been preparing to relocate City Hall in 2020 and 2021, the parties have discussed potential alternative methods for the delivery of prosecution services and locations where Whitman County District Court services could be made available within the city of Pullman, in addition to the county courthouse in Colfax. Since the city continues to evaluate the options for Pullman citizens, the city and the county have agreed to a one-year contract to document the terms of the county's provision of the misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor services regarding persons arrested by the city on city misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. The terms of the 2020 agreement provide for the city to pay the county $450,000. That will be paid in quarterly payments of $112,500, with the first one due at the end of March. This is an increase of $103,000 over the 2019 payment of $347,000. In addition, at the county's request, the city's agreed to very simplified reporting from the county consisting only of quarterly reports from district court on the adjudication of city cases and associated revenues, and then quarterly prisoner population reports from the sheriff's office. And as you know, during the term of this contract, or during the past year, the city engaged a consultant to evaluate what the city's options are for the delivery of these services, for both contracting for the misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor services, and how the city would handle adjudication of city infractions. So that study's ongoing, and after we get the results of that study, then staff will be making recommendation next year to the council as to what steps should be taken in future years. So the action request of you tonight is by motion authorize the execution of an agreement for misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor prosecution, indigent defense, adjudication, and incarceration costs with Whitman County for the year 2020.
Questions of our city attorney? If not, then do I hear a motion? Move to adopt. Your second.
Second.
Your second. Since we've read it, we will take care of that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five, discussion of the 2019-2020 budget amendments. Mike Irvin, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council. As part of the items that I brought to you on September 24th, as far as a work plan goes, this is the first look at the possible budget amendments for 2019 and a few for 2020. So just wanted to put this out as a discussion topic and go through some of the things that are going on in my department and answer any questions so I can come back to you either the 10th, as proposed with, depending on limited questions, or if there's more questions, then there is a meeting on the 17th, and I can certainly bring that back on the 17th and give you adequate time to review the answers that I provide you. Just as long as the 2019 stuff is tied up by the end of this year, that's the goal. So I provided to you a very brief explanation as part of the agenda item here, and I think there's a couple things that are worth going over before we dig into my memo. And that's really the updating the year-end estimates on the general fund balance, where originally the 2019 year-end balance was expected to be 4.1 million. We're going to be closer to 4.7 million. And the 2020 estimated general fund balance, which was down to 1.3 million, is actually going to be up, I believe, and again, your account is a little optimistic, so that's, that's...
That's not good.
That's not good. So 3.3 million. So that's something we're going to continue to monitor based on revenues and all the other stuff that's coming in. So to look at the memo before we get into the spreadsheets, because that's kind of where things go off the rails a little bit, because I tried to keep my memo to two pages and answer as many questions as I could, and I know there's additional questions into the spreadsheets. But really, a lot of this is housekeeping. So for me, the 54 revenue line items in 2019, '31 didn't have a budget to it, but we received revenues. So really, I'd like to tidy that up so it looks nice and clean when I put together the state audit report. Really just want to capture those revenues. Significant expenditures to the city, I brought through some of those in here, and we'll go kind of group by group, and I can take your questions on that. We're going to take some time talking about the airport and the grant, how that comes through. And then the expenses, of the 53 expenses on those lines, 45 on the 2020, 45 of those are carryover items. A lot of the expenses that we had in the 2019 budget were tied to being in City Hall a little sooner. So since the City Hall got pushed back a little bit to mid-year next year, some of those items are, we're going to want to carry over for those projects, other projects that we just didn't get to due to time and other constraints outside of our. So outside of that, there's the end of the, the end of the deal as far as additions go, I'll dress at the end with, going through the spreadsheet. So what I'm looking at right now is the 2019 budget amendments, and I'm going to kind of hit the highlights on the revenues and then take questions on revenues before I move on to expenses. So I've been watching the natural gas tax, because that's one of those items that we looked at for helping balance the construction costs at New City Hall, and that can, our natural gas use tax continues to be strong, so that's split amongst a couple funds. So I'm bringing the projected revenues up from $120,000 to $200,000. In the general fund, in the street fund, it goes from 70,000 to 100,000. And transit should be the other one. Yep, there it is. one, yep, there it is, going up from 65,000 to 100,000. The admissions tax also continues to remain strong, and so I expect another 150,000 overall was originally budgeted coming in for admissions tax. And then building permits, we had that huge retreat building permit come in just very recently, so, because it's a significant dollar amount percentage-wise, I wanted to bring that dollar up. In the street fund, some of our real estate excise tax goes into that, and real estate sales have been fairly strong as well, so I feel we should be bringing that item up commensurate with it, so I'm adding 100,000 to that revenue line. And then the civic improvement fund, which is the hotel motel transient tax, again, that comes in ahead of schedule, so I'm adding 179,000 of expected revenues for that item. So 2018 bond fund, there was no investment interest that was originally budgeted, and since the project is continuing to phase in the way it is, we're actually going to realize some investment dollars, so that will help with some of these costs that we're seeing through the difference in what was expect, what was bonded and what was actually bid. So that's worth mentioning. And then the airport fund, when the airport went out and put together their budget, they threw all their expected grant dollars into one grant number, and now that the grants have actually rolled in, this is just a matter of spreading it to the proper bars items, so that's what you're seeing there. And with that, all the items with asterisks on there were basically new items where there was basically a zero budget, so this is bringing everything more into right. So that's the revenue. Was there any questions on the revenue part of 2019 before I go into expenses? Okay, then expenses. Again, couple of these items, there were zero expense items towards, and some of the highlights that I want to point out before I take your questions. The City Hall, CIP-funded, $801,000. We put aside some CIP funds to help with some of the internal City Hall projects, so we're just capturing that. The planning line, there's $5,000 in there this year, and there's some money in there next year for some consultant work to come in and help with the comprehensive plan. The big number that jumps out is the water sewer revenue bonds. That went from 130,000 up to 1.7 million because we paid off that 2009 bond early, so we're just capturing that in there. I want to mention the water fund just really quick. I had a conversation with that department today. Because of the big retreat project and needing to put in some of the water infrastructure, they're looking at bringing in some materials here at the end of the year. We're trying to decide what the timing of that's going to be, so there might be an item, when I bring this back to you final, related to that. My indications from the early discussion is that might be pushed into 2020, but just in case, I at least wanted to mention it to you now. And then the other significant item I wanted to mention, again, the airport, kind of the same thing as what I mentioned before in the revenue, that 17 million was put into one grant, and then now that the grants have kind of rolled through, we're spreading that more appropriately. So those are the highlights of the 2019 expenses. Are there any questions on those before I move into 2020? Okay, so 2020, starting with the revenues, and as we go down here, it's going to be very important, I've changed hieroglyphics on you over there, I'm starting to add pluses, and these are basically to draw your attention directly to the lines that are carryovers from 2019 directly into the 2020 budget for some of the things that I mentioned before. So on the revenue side, general fund, again, I, because I'm raising the revenue amounts in '19 for natural gas, I felt I should probably do the same for 2020 to make it more realistic. So you'll see that in the general fund, the street fund, and transit, again, very commensurate with what we're doing in 2019, seeing how that goes. Admissions tax falls under the same, as well as REIT in the street fund, and hotel motel in the civic improvement fund.
Will that new hotel be on line yet in 2020, when they're building next to the Holiday Inn Express, or is that still going to be, still another year?
It hasn't been fully permitted yet, so.
The, I'm going to draw your attention here to these charges for services, these little odd dollar amounts, that these are commensurate with the expenses, they're dollar for dollar. When I get to that, I think addressing those, these revenues when we talk about the expenses makes a lot of sense, so if you can just put a placeholder on that, I'll come back to those down below. But are there any questions on the revenue?
Mike, what about, I know I've brought up like TPA before. I mean, any indication that that's something that we might look at for 2020? I would assume that would go under civic improvement as well, I mean, sitting there, or not sitting there, I guess, for us, but that might be, it's, I know it's a nominal amount, but is that, is that a possibility, you know, to explore that? I know we'd have to go through some sort of process, I think, to have the hotel folks actually move forward, and I don't know what that looks like, if it's a letter, if they have to come to council, or?
There'd have to be some sort of formal request of the city council.
Initiate it.
Right.
And I guess I'd leave it to Mike whether that would be a different bars account, be different.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I can, you know, if that is something that the council would like me to pursue and reach out to the hoteliers and see if that's something that they would consider sending the letter on, I'd be happy to take that direction, yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that's it.
Can I get a quick clarification? Is that something that a majority of the council wants the staff to look into?
I say let's look into it. I think we need more information on just exactly what's involved.
Yeah, more information would be important.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the expenses on 2020, so again, a lot of the pluses are carryovers for various reasons. Let me hit the highlights of some of the other items that maybe aren't carryovers, and answer your questions after this, too. The insurance line on general fund, we're just, we saw a large spike in our insurance, our liability insurance from WCIA, and a small one on our rolling stock, so that's to capture that. The line right below that, that's the district court item you guys just approved, so we're going to capture that in the 2020 budget right away. Almost everything in arterial streets, those are all carryovers, as well as with the street fund. In fact, all the rest of it are carryovers except for the civic improvement, so let me go ahead and bring that to your attention before I dive back into those last three items. What the civic improvement fund here, and this is a discussion that I'd like council to have and give me some direction on, two things. First, the $1,077,000 of the original budget in the civic improvement fund, please remember in 2020, there's that $700,000 loss in Garden Peace, so that's why it's up significantly over 2019. These two items, as we were looking at our costs for helping put on Fourth of July and the Lentle Festival, our costs keep rising dramatically, 50, I think I want to pull up my spreadsheet and give you the most accurate information here, but the difference in cost between 2018 and 2019 went up quite a bit, and basically, we're not recouping, we're charging back out $6,500. Here we go. I'm here. So what I'm asking council to consider, there we go, in, the costs, city costs, put on the Lentle Festival in 2018 were $18,900, and we build out 6,500 to the civic improvement, where basically we're taking this LTAC lodging tax money, sorry, that we paid to the chamber for putting on events, and then we billed them 6,500, and we brought it back into the general fund. So of that 18,900 cost, we build out 34%. In 2019, the Lentle Fest went up to 28,837 of costs, it was about a $9,900 increase, and we're still billing $6,500 because that's what's in the budget. With respect to the Fourth of July, 2018 cost, $19,736, again, we billed out $6,500. The 2019 cost for Fourth of July, $24,386, again, we built out 6, built out 600, $6,500. So that's another increase of $4,650, so we're billing out at 26%. We're using a lot of city resources to put on these events, and since there is extra money in lodging tax, I'd like to bring a little more equity back to the city. So when I put these $2 in here, I did jumping off point of 75% of our previous year's costs. I took 75% of the 2019 Fourth of July cost, subtract out the 6,500 that we already have budgeted, and that's why you see those numbers there. And now going back to the revenue side, you'll see those numbers match the revenue as well. So I would like some council direction, or certainly, you know, hey, Mike, the 75% sounds great, I have numbers at a bunch of different levels, if council's happy, still billing out at less than 30%, we can continue doing that, too, but our costs are going up significantly in police, fire, parks for.
The money is there in the lodging tax.
It is.
We ought to try and recoup as much as we possibly can.
Yeah.
Seems like it.
Well, I think, and Laura, I'll kind of throw this your way, when we initially looked at that $6,500 back, I don't know, five or six years ago, was predominantly for the Fourth of July, and the city had come to the lodging tax committee asking for help in paying for police, fire, public safety kind of things, and so we weren't able, you cannot, at least as I'm recalling, you can't use lodging tax dollars to pay for those kinds of costs. So we essentially, you took that $6,500 which was asked for to be applied to police, fire, park services, whatever, and paid for fireworks, or a portion of the fireworks, which is a marketing, you know, it falls under that aspect of marketing to draw people in for the fireworks rather than do the direct payout on those public safety kinds of things. Are you remembering any of that?
I do remember that. I believe that was prior to the change in the statute that allowed for funding the operational costs of putting on an event for purposes of bringing in tourists. So since that time, yes, you're right, there was originally a grant request to pay for the fireworks cost, but then subsequently, it's been budgeted as a, as part of the operational cost of the event, and similar to the operational cost of the contract with the chamber.
So that's, that's the background.
So with the change in the law, we can now recoup more money than we?
That's what I was.
Yes, and you've continued, you have been recouping operational costs, that's what the 6,500 for the Lentle.
Obviously, it doesn't cover what we.
Right, no, it, you have been recouping, I do remember that council member right, but that was prior to the legislature changing the authorized uses for the tax, or actually, it was just a clarification from.
So I think then would we need a grant application to come from the city to acquire funds to cover those operational expenses?
It's part of what, it would be part of the budget that, say, for example, the Lentle Festival puts together for its project, and that's, they get billed, and they can pay that bill out of the lodging tax funds that they receive for the project, for their festival. So it's essentially increasing the amount that the city is billing the Lentle Festival for the services it provides so that they can put on the event, and so it's an operational expense of the Lentle Festival.
So Mike, police and fires, you've mentioned, but we have MNO that come for the Fourth of July ahead of time, and they set up all the barriers and all that. Parks and Rec do a fantastic job in both instances, and there's a lot of Parks people that are being used for both Lentle and Fourth of July, so why wouldn't we try and keep, keep their budgets in here, too, along with police and fire?
So when we get the money, once we bill the Lentle Festival, the Fourth of July, to the chamber for putting it on, and we receive back those dollars, those numbers are spread proportionally between the Parks, Fire, and Police revenue lines, based on the amount of work they've put in, and Parks is the line share of that.
We have Transit. Transit helps people on the Fourth of July, we transport people to the Sunny Side Park. Transit's in that budget, too.
I think we need to look at all of the entities, since we have an operational go-ahead with these dollars now that we need to look at all the affected departments and offset those budgets.
Now, part of Transit, we also use from radio commercials, so some of that money helps pay for some of that, but I think you need to take a look at Transit, MNO, and everybody.
Okay. Traditionally, we haven't billed any of those other three departments, and I'd be happy to look at this more holistically, too, and that, council member right, that's part of the, what I was looking at, so is increase the revenue, not just increase the revenues coming back to the city, but increase the expenses, so the budgets could grow for the Lentle Festival, for the Fourth of July to accommodate this, since we have ample dollars that appears to be coming through the civic improvement fund.
Al?
I think it'd be a really, really good thing for us to get a complete update on what the changes were and what can be covered and not covered now, because things are, seems to me like it's a little bit broader as to what we can do with the lodging tax dollars, is that right?
Well, that change was, I want to say about eight years ago, so we would have done briefing at that time, but we can certainly.
We should have a refresher for current council of everything that that money can be used for.
It was very restricted before, you had to bring people and put people in beds.
Yeah, but that's changed.
Yeah. Okay.
So the civic improvement fund continues to grow, or not anywhere near tapping that out, where we've got plenty of elbow room in that for doing certain things?
Say the word plenty to the council.
What's sort of the ballpark on that?
Unrestricted reserves.
Yeah.
Ballpark, north of 700,000.
So.
That's after the Lawson Gardens?
Yeah, separate, unrestricted, separate of Lawson Gardens, separate of grants that have been given by the LTAC committee but haven't come to fruition yet because the event hasn't taken place. So I, I want to, I want to ballpark that very broadly, because I would want to sit down like the chamber and see, okay, what grants are out there, and what percentage have you reimbursed?
But it does continue to grow.
Yes, because the budget was, you know, set, 371 was the expected revenue to come in from lodging tax, so therefore, the expenses were set at 371, too, and as you can see, we're bringing in more than what's being spent.
So you're, Mike, your concerns were about the growing costs for both Fourth of July and the Lentle Festival. How do we, how do we think about that? How should we think about that?
Oh, wow, that's a great question for me. The costs continue to escalate in such a way where I'd like to get to a point with whatever percentage the council feels comfortable with, and we can change this on a, you know, budget-by-budget basis, where you can say, hey, Mike, whatever the previous year's amount was, you know, 75% of that, adjust the budget going into the next year, and then if the costs, you know, change this way, we can adjust it the other way, but since they're continuing to rise, I'd like to see it instead of a flat dollar amount, basically, a percentage of the cost, since we're billing it out anyway, and that gives me a chance to bring you guys back the report saying, here's, here's what happened.
Yeah, do we have any metrics on, on our participation, how many people are coming to these events? Do we have any metrics on that?
It's one of the requirements of the grantee to.
Bring those back.
Provide us with that. Provide us with that information.
But your, your memory's kind of be far better than mine on that. Are those numbers growing year over year?
Certainly for Lentle Festival. I think for the Fourth of July as well.
Fourth of July is too.
I can't tell you by, by what percentage of the...
And we changed vendor this year for Fourth of July, so we had some new numbers, and we, and we have to, we have, you know, we, one of the fundraisers is in selling food and barbecue. And so as a consequence, we changed vendors to, from Hilltop over to Paradise Creek. And so he has some new numbers that he's working his way through too. So we'll, we recoup some of that money, so.
So is my seventy-five percent jumping off point allowable, or do you want me to look at a different deal, or do you want me to come up with a different...
That's a good start.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because I have numbers for ninety percent. I can obviously do a hundred percent, that's easy, because that was our costs. So would you like me to bring you back?
I'd go higher. I'd go, I'd just ask for that amount.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Okay. I'll amend these...
You might just have, you know, the two different figures, seventy-five and a hundred percent. You got the both figures already, so you just let us know.
Yeah, the, you know, seventy-five percent, the difference was eleven seventy, seven eighty-nine on Fourth of July, and now that will be eighteen, eighteen thousand for Fourth of July, because we're already going sixty-five hundred.
But I do want you to look at Transit, MNO, and Parks.
As part of this budget amendment?
Yes, by all means.
Okay.
Because every one of those are involved.
Be an additional amount.
And Ruth Yance, an engineer.
Okay. Parks is handled in here, so I feel really good about that number.
But will you have maintenance and operations to report that?
I will, based on this additional work, so I'll reach out to Ruth and Wayne and Art and see if they can aggregate some sort of dollar amount. And because of the timing of getting the council item on the agenda, I, I'd like to ask for this to be pushed to the seventeenth, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. I will come back to you with an update and explanation in my agenda item for the seventeenth.
I like it.
And I, again, this is a little off topic, but somebody could please refresh my memory. Where are we on the Lawson Gardens Pavilion Project? Is that a question for Kevin, maybe? I know we've seen some very preliminary drawings, but that feels like it's been some while ago. Are we...
Didn't we just get an email about that?
Yeah.
Did I miss something? I could have, easily.
We're about halfway through design, probably, with Design West, and there's a meeting with the Cemetery Committee, I mean, not Cemetery, Lawson Gardens Committee, sorry.
That's right, we had, we appointed somebody to the Cemetery Committee.
They probably feel like it's a cemetery. Pioneer Center, tomorrow afternoon at three-thirty. So we're gonna show, the consultant will show the design work to date, and we'll get feedback from the committee. So it, it's moving along.
The priority had been the design team working on the City Hall and Rec Center, so that had taken, since we're using the same firm, that had taken away some of the bandwidth. They had staff working on, on the project, so it's still working along. It's probably going to be more of a focus later in two thousand and twenty, and then getting into twenty-one for sure.
Okay.
And Mike, I just want to say, on behalf of a number of us who've been on the council for a while, I really appreciate the detail that you're giving us.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the input that you're giving us, it is very, very appreciated. I just want you to know that. And I'm seeing more numbers here, and I've gotten more feedback from you since you've come on board than I've had in a long time, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And as I can continue to move along, please tell me what else I can do to improve and get you the data.
And I like Brandon's comment too. It's understandable.
Okay. Can I have a letter? If you need to take hold then. I just, I want to touch on three, I'm sorry, I want to touch on three little bullet points at the end of my memo if there weren't any more questions on the expenses for two thousand and twenty. Okay. Then just really quick for your consideration as well, the last three items pulled out of the budget, you know, based on where revenues are and reserves, I'm floating to you for your consideration, putting these three items kind of back in. So the first one is, we're recommending the, the council reinstitute the two percent quota for non-represented staff. This is split, as you can see, between two basically different funds. The general fund would absorb about seventy-five percent of that, because that's where of the seventy-two people that are non-reps live. And then the rest of them are in the different utility funds, so they would be absorbed by utility dollars. So the total, sorry, with me. Yeah, here. So the total dollar on that, I believe, is a hundred and six thousand dollars, and that covers a hundred and three thousand four hundred and nineteen. So that's in here for your consideration on these sheets. The other two items, next to last, was originally, there was a, a budget manager position going into the Finance Department. Since I've got here and I've done some evaluation, I don't believe we need a budget manager per se, but I need another technical accountant. I'm working on two more data points to get you a memo out by the end of this week to justify that position. So that'll have costs and cost savings and metrics that you need to help make that decision. So that'll be in the next deal for you to consider either...
Seventeenth?
That'd be the seventeenth. How busy is the meeting on the tenth right now? Not very.
Now that we pulled your item, it's much lighter.
I'll probably bring that item then for the memo on the, for the, just a quick discussion on this.
Seventeenth, you've got legislators.
Yes.
So it's gonna be a full meeting.
And then the last item is, as we move into...
Right. Make a list, make a list into all those.
Wow.
He gave us a report of all the stuff that's been cut out of our budget because of the state.
The, the last item, and probably won't come to you until the end of quarter one, when we know when we'll be getting into new City Hall, was a couple customer service reps for the front of City Hall for directing, answering questions and that. And that can wait until we know the move-in date, because there just isn't capacity to put those folks in yet. So like you to consider that too, but that'll probably be a two thousand and twenty budget amendment. I just want to get that on your radar. Okay?
Yes.
So I got my homework. I'll get this all put together, and I'll be back to see you soon on this. Thank you. Was there any, any other...
Other input or question?
Something comes up later, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you, council.
With that, we now come to new business. Any new business to come before the council tonight? And Eileen?
I have an item of new business. Actually, I had two, but one is much more important than the other, so my personal item will be left aside. We have been getting information from the Hood family about the history of their involvement in the community and the history of, of, you know, we have two, we have two families we're trying to honor here. We're trying to honor their contributions to this community broadly. We have the Hood family, and we have the Breltsford family. And I don't know that supplanting one with the other gets us there. I think we can do both. I think we can honor both of these families. The Hood family has been sitting here through this, this evening, and they have provided some documentation to me, if we can pass...
Went to everyone.
Did it go to everybody? Okay. I wasn't exactly sure.
He sent out, they've, they've...
Okay. So, yeah, let's try to, let's try to make everybody whole here, and rather than replacing one with the other, the Hood family has a particular fondness for this location, and it was originally platted that way, and I feel that that, that honors them, and I don't think we will have any challenges before us in, in honoring the Breltsford family in a similar manner on maybe something that's more appropriate to their specific type of contribution to the community. So I would like to make a motion that we move forward with an ordinance that restores the Hood family name onto this original plat.
Want to make sure that this meets legal from the, from that standpoint.
Well, it would require a second to go forward, but if you, the, the street was renamed via ordinance, so it would require a future ordinance if you wanted to change that action and do something different.
That is the nature of my motion.
Okay, I'd second that.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Further discussion about this? Yes, or questions? Or what, and again, the developer came up with a solution. So Kevin, let's just get one of the background.
Yeah, maybe just a little bit of background. And this is, I understand it's a delicate topic, and, you know, obviously, no disrespect was intended towards the Hood family. When Chapman, or Chipman's short plat number two was completed and recorded in nineteen ninety-five, Hood Drive was established through that, but it existed on paper only, because the street wasn't constructed until much later. And so the property owner, the owners of the lots that were part of that short plat, the ownership changed hands. Dwayne Breltsford Jr. ended up with ownership of all the parcels, and he's the one that developed it. And so he wanted to honor his father, who had passed, with dedicating Breltsford Drive behind, where the Starbucks is now, the new Starbucks in the car wash. That's Breltsford Drive. That piece of Hood Drive that comes up off of Bishop, he requested that also be renamed to Breltsford Drive, so it would just be one complete looped street through there called Breltsford Drive, and that's what happened. Hood Drive got constructed around two thousand and eleven, when Duane built that, that little kind of strip mall that has Washington State Employees Credit Union in it. He subsequently built Starbucks and is working on the car wash, and then has some lots behind Breltsford Drive. When the idea was originally floated by Duane last year, the conversation led to, would the city entertain renaming that street? And the caveat that we came up with was, we needed to talk to somebody who had been part of the original plating and asked whether it'd be okay with that person. And so Norm Wilson was one of the original signatories on the short plat, and Steve Wilson was the one I contacted, and I got a letter from Steve as the heir indicating that he didn't have a problem with the name change. And so that was kind of procedurally how it went and how it ended up coming before you for approval. I guess from the beginning, at, when this issue was raised, I think another alternative would be to look for another street to name or rename, probably name, Hood Drive. And I had floated the idea to Duane Breltsford when this all came up, and Duane said he would certainly entertain naming, a naming opportunity in a future project of his for the Hoods, you know, because they have been longstanding family in Pullman. And oftentimes, when subdivisions come up, developers don't always have names that they, they're, they're, you know, they may not have kids, you know, that they've got to put on every street in the subdivision.
Well, you look at Carol Star, which is, why the two people are...
Exactly. So, but oftentimes, it's like, eh, Rolling Hills, you know, they, they struggle with coming up with names. And so I think we could help facilitate, you know, finding a street, perhaps in a new subdivision, that could also have that name. So I think there's options that way too, and I just wanted to present that to you tonight and give you some background.
Okay. Nathan?
So, let me get this straight. So off of, thank you, Ann, I didn't hand it up on mine. So the one that's being renamed is the one off of Bishop, Hood, Hood Drive. It's that short plat, but then it hooks up to a future of Breltsford Drive.
And Breltsford Drive is in. It's been constructed and has been dedicated.
So it seems like that's just logical to do the Hood, and then Breltsford Drive is already going to be there anyway. Is that correct?
But it would be one continuous...
It would be one continuous loop around.
Right.
Is, is the way it's showing.
However, there are streets that go in, and then there's another name of another street that goes on.
The, the way it looks, it's not just one loop, it's a street and then another, and then, and then another.
There's one, there's no other stop.
It's a dogleg. I mean, a, a drive and the way we address streets is something that meanders, and that's how we looked at it.
Okay, because this almost looks at a right angle, so...
Yeah, it's pretty close to that.
So, I mean, Hood just goes into Breltsford, so I mean, right?
That's, that's the way I'm seeing it.
So I don't see any, I, I see that that's the, that's the middle ground. I mean, Breltsford is already there. Hood is already there, and just, I'd just leave it alone. Yeah, like, but there was a change.
But we changed... Hood is not there anymore. Hood was renamed by council action.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
What you're saying is, put that back.
Just keep it.
Okay.
Know what you're saying.
That's my motion. That's the nature of my motion.
We're still discussing. Al.
So Hood Drive no longer exists, sir?
Correct.
Yeah. We okayed that that happened?
Right, right.
It was okayed by the previous owners of the ground with a letter to the current owner of the ground with no objection. I do believe that the owner of the ground has the right to name his streets. And tell me if I'm wrong, Kevin, he could have short-platted it or changed it from Hood to whatever he wanted without even council approval before the street was put in. Is that right?
He could have done a short plat to redo that whole, that whole thing.
So whatever the corporation is that owns the ground could have changed it without even our approval.
But would they have reached out to the family?
They reached out to the owner of the ground.
Yeah, I know, but would that corporation?
The owner of the ground.
Yeah.
And the previous owners. Okay? I don't believe that there was any malicious intent to take the Hoods off of anything. There are properties and streets being built in this town all over the place, not only with the current property owner, but all kinds of, I mean, all over the place. We've already changed the street name. Okay? And the idea of us voting on something and bringing up an idea tonight without any further discussion about it, I'm not comfortable with.
Okay.
And, you know, you know, Mr. Breltsford is a reasonable person, I think the Hoods are reasonable people, and I see no reason that we can't maybe figure something else out of this. And so that's where I'm at with this.
Well, you're right, is, is to have it on like an agenda later and have a discussion so it'd be a...
You've already got a motion in a second.
Right, we, we haven't taken a vote yet, so.
So, so I think, you know, I, I fully understand where, where Al's coming from. I think inherent in, in us receiving the information that said, and I went back and I watched the video, city staff contacted Steve Wilson, heir of Norman Wilson, who was involved in the original selection of the name. I mean, I, you know, for me, Hood Drive didn't, and no disrespect to the family, I didn't realize it was a family, a local family here in Pullman. I mean, we have a Mount Hood, a Hood River, I mean, Hood Drive was not...
There are a number of Hoods that have been here for years.
Okay. And I know that now. You know, as far as I was concerned, this was, you know, no, no problem whatsoever. There was no family that was going to object anyway. So that was, I guess where I'm coming from is necessarily understanding or having that full information.
So we have a motion in a second at this point, and we also have an option of coming back at another council meeting.
To clarify, my understanding is the motion was to move forward with an ordinance, so the ordinance would be brought back at a future meeting, the draft, a draft ordinance to rename just that portion of the road, Hood Drive.
Okay.
Or, as has been suggested, as Al suggested, that, you know, I would, I would be okay with, with throwing that motion if we could make sure that we had it as a discussion for further discussion on a future agenda. Is that at all clear, or is that wood salad?
Since you said we have a light December tenth agenda, would this be, can we bring it back?
I would suggest that we make sure that the parties involved can be involved.
Yes, definitely. Yeah. On the basis of that, they would be available to act.
Correct. Yeah.
Can, can we recognize?
We just, one second, want to make sure the council's clear on this first, because that was a discussion.
No, it's, yeah.
So, yes. Okay.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the Chipman short plat number two is, was designated in nineteen ninety-five in honor of Alan's father. And Hood Drive was put on it, reaching out to Bishop. There was no road connecting in the back. So Breltsford and the city and whoever wanted a road in the back, which is fine, but they took the road in the back, named it Breltsford, and then used that as an excuse to kick out Hood Drive. And so it's a little bit of a back door kicking off Hood Drive from connecting with Bishop. The Hood family's been here a hundred and twenty-three years.
The Hood family's been here 123 years. This was named after Bill Hood, Alan's father, his grandfather was here, and separate and apart from contacting the property owner, who actually wasn't the property owner, it was his son or grandson, the council had to find good cause, a public interest in changing the name from Hood Drive. And just because you put a street behind Hood Drive, and then you want that connection, is not in the public interest.
Okay, let me go to, to our city attorney here right now, because you're, you're saying that that was not-
Yeah, there's no provision in Pullman City Code that there has- It's in the state code. I think you're looking at the street vacation statute, and- No, I can get in touch with you, but there has to be something in the public interest. You just don't let a developer-
We're not going to resolve this tonight, okay? So I think it needs to come up on another agenda item at a later time, if you're comfortable with that.
Yes, I am.
As second, you're comfortable with that, too. Okay, we have that, and again, trying to make sure the parties are involved. Can we put it on the December, the next, the 10th? 10th as agenda item, okay? And we'll discuss it.
Thank you. Mayor, you have a motion on the floor, unless it's withdrawn.
It has been withdrawn.
It has been withdrawn, okay? And it was okay with the Senate?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, any other new business to come before the council tonight? At this point, we are now going to go, we're going to take a three-minute break, because we're going to move fast. We have an executive session that's coming up to confer with legal counsel, represent the city concerning potential litigation that has been specifically threatened with the city or the governing body or a member acting in official capacity. Estimated time is 15 minutes. So exactly at 9:55, we will meet somewhere in executive session.